Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, October 24th, 2006. We are here in City Council chambers in John Ferraro Council Chambers, that is Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. These meetings are open to the public, and we invite members of the public down here to testify and general public comment, or on items that have been agendized on our agenda for public comment. And those agendas are available through the City Clerk's office, here in Council Chambers, through our great Council ambassadors in the back, who are here to explain any of the ins and outs of our council meetings. Or you can go online to get the agendas at our city's homepage, www.lacity.org, and click on the City Council link. These meetings are televised on Channel 35, LA City View, your city channel, and rebroadcast in the evenings also on Channel 35 through the city's cable system. If you are closer to a computer, you can always log on and catch streaming video live of the council meetings at lacity.org. And lastly, you can call in through council phone and listen to the audio portions of the council meetings, or any of our committee meetings as well. The first Friday of the month, we always go to Van Nuys City Hall, where we reach out to the residents of the San Fernando Valley, and we will shortly be having meetings down in the Harbor area as well, in our efforts to get closer to where people live. We also invite people to testify via remote from our Van Nuys City Hall facility, and during any of our regular downtown meetings, we are able to see you via remote facility. So if that's closer to where you live, you are able to testify there. I want to thank the council members that are here pursuing to council rules on time. Council members Gruel, Han, Labange, Rosenthal, and Zine, with myself, that makes six members, and we are waiting four more members to begin our council meeting. Councilmember Parks is excused on city business today, so we are awaiting Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Wizar, Councilmember Padilla, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson to join us. As soon as we have four more members, we will have a quorum, and we will begin with our salute to the flag. So again, if those council members can make their way down, that's Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Wizar, Councilmember Padilla, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Padilla, for joining us, and Councilmember Cardenas. We are at eight members, and Councilmember Wesson, I have nine. One more member, and we will begin the meeting.
We are awaiting Councilmember Wizar, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Weiss. And in the meantime, we'd like to welcome back Councilmember Zine from his travels in Asia, where he was with the mayor and Councilmember Weiss promoting Los Angeles in China, Korea, and Japan, and trust that he had good and productive travels. Welcome back.
Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Wizar, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Wesson seconds. If there's no objection, that will be unanimously approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
And Mr. Padilla moves, Mr. Labange seconds. If there is no objection, that too will be unanimously approved.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Let's start with the salute to the flag, please, as we do for the first meeting of the week. Mr. Zine, would you be kind enough to lead us now that you're back in the salute to the flag? If I can ask everybody in Council Chambers to please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
Place your hand over your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. We will take public comment this time, and our first speaker is Zuma Dog. You have two minutes.
All right, you know Zuma Dog, he likes to promote literacy. We got the daily news. You've been hearing Zuma Dog talk about Proposition R. Later, check the daily news, they do such great reporting. Regarding Prop R, a complaint was filed Monday with the City Ethics Commission, and Controller Laura Chick abandoned her neutrality on Proposition R, calling for its defeat and demanding that Prop R supporters stop making misleading statements about her in their campaign mailers to voters. LA City Controller Laura Chick says, "In fact, I adamantly oppose Proposition R, and using my name in mailers is duplicitous and intentionally deceiving. In fact, I adamantly oppose Proposition R for many reasons, not the least of which is the disingenuous way which this measure was placed on the ballot." Thank you, League of Women Voters. "I urge the voters of Los Angeles to vote no on Proposition R," said City Controller Laura Chick. And Zuma Dog would like to remind you, despite Chick's own words, the League of Women Voters who initiated Prop R, and are still the only supporters, say these mailers aren't deceptive. And let's see, what else? The voters do get to decide on Prop R, though. That's on November 7th, when it's put to a vote. And so, if you do get one of those deceiving, duplicitous ballots, mailers in the mail, please remember that Laura Chick urges the city of Los Angeles to vote no on Prop R. Also, Rocky Delgado was here, who said that the whole thing was not put through the Ethics Committee with no public input. The language is confusing. Proposition R, they're calling it term limits, it's to extend or lengthen councils' terms from two to three. So they call it limits. So that's been deceiving the voters. Then they added something called Ethics Reform Campaign lobbying, and this doesn't even do anything to help to take the bamboozlement out of the shady money. So basically, I have to side with Laura Chick on this, and having to take a no position on Proposition R, I urge the voters to as well.
Candido Morris is our next speaker, and then it'll be Michael Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. I want to apologize to the council. After being here since 1991, sometimes I speak a little too boldly, sir, and I never want to sound disrespectful to you or to any of the council members. And to Mrs. Rosenthal, I hope I can get back that piece of newspaper, because those were powerful words. In regards to Proposition R, Mr. President, council members, as I said, I've been here a long, long time. Two terms does not do it. You need three terms. If we're really going to see effective, good government, you need three terms. Some council people I don't agree with, but if you can prove yourself within the first year, second year, you can start to do things. But three years, you can really accomplish a lot of great things. So again, I apologize for any time that I speak a little too boldly. Thank you, Mr. President.
No need to apologize. That's what we have public comment for. Michael Hunt is our next speaker.
Thank you, guys, for waiting for me. I'm still pissed off. I'm the last nigger standing here. Wait, 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 wait. I got to decorum.
Please pause. Hold on. We have a rule decorum.
And have you say that word, okay? I am not gonna, I'm not gonna do it. I'm not gonna do it. I am not going to do it. No, I'll tell you where you niggas.
Mr. Hunt, I will warn you, I will warn you right now. We have rules of decorum. Hold up. Mr. Hunt, Mr. Hunt, if you can't listen right now, we will have you get you out. Listen, you can use whatever words you want. We would ask you not to do that here. We would use speech right now to ask you to please respectfully address all the members of the public, as well as the council here, and express your views in a way that is respectful to them, that does not use racist language. You have the right to do it, but you don't have to do it. And it clearly is something in which is taking away from your... Hold on, Mr. Hunt, you're not on right now, and your microphone's off. So we will make sure you have your two minutes, but please abide by the rules of decorum. Please do not raise your voice. We try to address you respectfully, and I'm asking you, out of respect, to please address the public and all members of this body, as well as all races, all ethnicities, with respectful language, please.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Weiss.
Mr. President, I would respectfully disagree, okay? This gentleman has been warned time and time and time again. And I don't see the point of continually warning someone when they interrupt and ruin the decorum of this body. I think the warnings have been made sufficiently. I think when this happens in the future, he should be, he should be, his time should be terminated, and if he's disruptive, he should be removed from the chamber, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Mr. City Attorney?
I'll just read from 12B of the council rules. "The rules of decorum set forth above shall be enforced in the following manner. The presiding officer of the council shall be responsible for maintaining the order and decorum of meetings. The presiding officer may request that a person who is violating the rules of decorum, as set forth in Rule 12, which Mr. Hunt was doing, comply immediately. If, after receiving a warning from the presiding officer, a person persists in violating the rules of decorum, the presiding officer shall order him or her to leave the council meeting. Any person so ordered, removed, shall be excluded from further attendance at the meeting from which he or she has been removed unless permission to attend is granted upon motion adopted by majority of the council." So Mr. Hunt has received his warning. If he continues, then he can be ordered, removed forthwith.
Thank you, and I appreciate very much your comments, Mr. Weiss. We've issued that warning. Please continue with that.
Mr. Garcetti, if I'm not looking at this paper, it says political outlooks and are protected speech. So is what I'm saying not protected under the First Amendment? It says it right here with you, signed by Bernard Parks, Bill Rosenthal, Herb Wesson, Jan Perry. So if nigger is protected, then I shouldn't have any problem with sending.
Mr. Wesson, yes.
He's disrupting the meeting.
That is correct. Under rules of decorum.
Throw him out.
The next speaker.
I will not let you use that word in my presence. Watch. Watch me stop you.
This is, Mr. Hunt, your time is up. We're asking you to please sit down. Matt Dowd is our next speaker.
Watch me stop you.
Mr. Dowd?
You think it's a joke? You think it's a joke?
Mr. Dowd is our next speaker.
Okay, can we reset the clock, please?
You have two minutes. Go ahead. We started. Go ahead.
See, it's not funny. You made this guy homeless with a discriminatory ordinance. See, that's the point. And I'm not surprised that that takes everything I've got not to scream that.
Mr. Dowd, please keep your voice down. That is also under rules of decorum.
Because that annoys me a lot. Because you discriminate against artists on the beach based on the medium upon which they create. You know, if I make a photo, right, or a painting, and I want to sell that, but I want to put the Jewish calendar on it, or I want to put some philosophical meaning, oh, I'm sorry, that's a calendar, and it has more than nominal utility. So you're discriminating with your nominal utility. The federal court said T-shirts with a political message are protected if you're selling them, but your nominal utility says, oh, T-shirt, it has more than nominal utility. So where's the attorney from the CLA's office? What's his opinion on this? You've got pregnant women and children, you supposedly care about the children of this city, and there's people trying to earn a living for their kids, with a permit from the city of Los Angeles, people. See, why do you think these people are in here for six months? It's just beyond ridiculous. A T-shirt, oh, the great city of Los Angeles, with hundreds of millions of dollars, spends everywhere, but here's an African-American guy just trying to make a living with a permit. And you've made him homeless. He's homeless. And I know that.
Thank you. That closes our public comment for today. Madam Clerk, let's run through the roll.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there is a request to continue item 20 for one day, and that would be 10:25.
Okay. Colleagues, is there any objection to continuing till the 25th, item number 18? That's till tomorrow. Seeing none, so ordered.
And there's also a request to continue item number 33 for one week, and the new date would be October 31st.
Okay. Colleagues, is there any objection to continuing item 33 one week? If not, that too will be ordered. Next items, please.
Next items on the agenda, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings haven't held, items 1 through 6, and they are ordinances. I believe there's a card on item number 1. Do you wish to hold those on the desk for 12 council members?
Yes, let's hold those on the desk, please.
The next items before council then would be items 7 through 19, and those are items for which public hearings have been held. 18 has already been continued. And there are two reports on items 17 and 19. A motion is required on those.
Okay. Anybody like to move the items on 17 and 19? Those reports are from which committees? Mr. Padilla?
Let's call item 17 special, please.
Okay. Mr. Padilla calls 17 special. And on 19, what the two reports are from where?
On item number 19, the two reports are budget and finance, and ITGS, and actually, council can adopt both if they wish, or the budget and finance, that's a note and file with an additional instruction.
Okay, why don't we move both of those? Any specials, colleagues? Let's hold seven and eight as ordinances, and 15 for Mr. Labange. Any other specials, colleagues?
Sorry, 16.
Sorry, 16 for Ms. Gruel. Other specials, colleagues? Okay. If not, let's open the roll, on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 20 through 32. 10 votes are required for consideration, and there are ordinances on 20 through 24.
Okay, let's hold those ordinances on the desk, please.
And I believe there's, there are cards on 20, 25, 26, 29, 30, 32, and 38.
Okay, let's call those special for cards from the public. And any specials, colleagues, for the remaining items? If not, let's open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
And next items on the supplemental agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held, and those would be 34 through 41.
Okay. Colleagues, we have 34 through 31. Any specials on those? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Do you wish to take the items called special? The first item that's not an ordinance then would be item number 15, and that was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Yes, please. Mr. Labange, we have number 15 before us.
Technical question, who's a technical Harry? You could answer for the police department? Who could speak? Technical question, Mr. President, maybe you could help me on this here.
Yeah, what is the question, sir?
Okay, the question is this. It says, and city family. If a city family member, anyone in any department, from A to Z, if they have an alarm, and they have alarm because they have a special need, do they have to pay as well?
You want us to hold that on the desk till we have the answers?
I don't want to hold, I just want an answer.
Okay. I don't know if there's any staff here that knows that. Let's find that out for you.
Mr. Zine.
Mr. Zine?
If I can comment on that, the intention was if it is connected to the police department, where you get priority response, then it would be included.
I understand that. But let's say it's an employee of a Bureau of Statistics.
Right.
And they're getting picked on by someone, so we hook this system up. I want to stand for city employees, as all of us do.
It would apply for them also.
Why should it apply for them if they're being picked on because they're delivering their job?
Well, we want to make it fair with the minimal fee that everyone pays.
Let me have a friendly amendment. If at any one time that there's a system set up for a special need for a city employee, if the council wants to waive that fee, we could so waive it.
Well, I'm sure we can always waive it. If it's a temporary versus a permanent, I wouldn't have any...
But you never know what it is, Dennis, because you've worked it.
I wouldn't have any problem with it. The issue was, we were receiving the alarms installed, and we weren't paying for the fee or for the false alarms. There was an issue about that, to be fair, once we changed the alarm ordinance, so we wanted to be fair.
Is this everyone who works for the city of Los Angeles, then?
That was the intention of any...
So any general manager has to pay?
The issue was, if it was priority alarm to the police department, if it's an alarm system that goes through an alarm company, it wouldn't apply. Only those that have the priority through the police department. Our alarms are connected to the police department, we get priority dispatch. Those are the ones. Now, if it was a temporary situation, that wasn't considered. If it was a temporary situation with an employee who's having a harassment problem, that wasn't considered.
Let me just ask the clerk, if in the event that friendly emotion would be, if in the event that there's a city employee who has a special need, that the council could consider waiving the fee for that city employee?
That would be up to the council to approve that.
I know, but that's a friendly amendment. Does that sound fair enough?
If it's...
If it's accepted by the council.
Has to be accepted without objection, for the council to count as a friendly amendment.
I would only say that it would be an individual situation that would be brought up individually, and that we would do that, because there are very few of those that are installed. I have no problem doing that amendment, though.
Oh, thank you, then. If that's okay with everybody.
Then if there's no objection, that'll be accepted as a friendly amendment.
For city employees, if so deemed.
This is for non-elected city employees?
Non-elected, non-elected. And it could be of any department.
That's correct.
Of any position in that department.
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay, great. There's nobody else that wishes to be heard on this? Let's open the roll, as amended, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay. We do have 12 members now. I know we have a card on one, so let's call that special. But on the other ordinances that don't have cards?
That would be items 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, 7, 8, and then 21, 22, 23, and 24.
Okay. Let's open the roll on those, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Let's go back to item number one. We have one public speaker card. Zuma Dog, if you'd like, come forward on item number one.
Thank you. Yes, this item number one, it also applies to items number 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. So that's big city business. It's regarding improvements in maintenance throughout the city. Present and adopt the accompanying, levying the assessments. Okay, now, the problem is, the EAA possibly could be going on strike. I want you to maybe jam this through as quick as possible, all these improvements, because the thing about the EAA, they've been working without a contract since 2004, and they're going to be here tomorrow filling up these bleachers, and then if they go on strike...
Please keep the comments to the protests on Big Ten Hunger Canyon Road.
Yeah, here's how the EAA affects this. They're in charge, you can't levy the assessments as here in the ordinance without the EAA, the engineers and architects, and also then the maintenance as well. You can't do maintenance without EAA. They do all the engineering for the projects and whatnot. So try to get the EAA settled up, so we don't go on strike, and we can get these maintenance things done that we need so badly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dog. That closes public comment for number one. We can open the roll, please, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Next item called special is item number 16, and that was called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, before you today is an item regarding a parking cash-out program in the city of Los Angeles. It's an under-enforced health and safety code, which I believe has the potential to reduce our air pollution and congestion. By providing people with equal incentives for driving alone, carpooling, or taking transit, we begin to let, excuse me, level the playing field for alternatives. This law is about giving people opportunities and a choice to travel in less polluting ways that also decrease traffic congestion. Currently, many employees are provided free parking by their employers. As a result, 93% of commuters arrive in single occupancy vehicles, which clogs our streets and highways. Studies have shown that employers exert influence over the mode and choice of employees, and that provision of free parking promotes the use of single occupancy vehicles. Changes in workplace policies have demonstrated significant decreases in the single occupancy vehicle commutes. As many of you know, given the cost of congestion in Los Angeles, close to $11 billion, any reduction potential is too great to ignore, and this law particularly. In Santa Monica, where the law was enforced, there were reductions of 20% of parking spaces utilized at qualifying businesses. So what we're trying to do is look at ways in which the city of Los Angeles can help enforce this state law, which has not been enforced by the state. And there was an article a week or so ago about this, talking about, and I was surprised at how many people came to me and said, if I was offered the option of taking public transportation and receiving the same amount of money that my employer is spending on leasing a space, I would consider taking public transportation. Some of the averages look at, if you lease a space, it's $185 per month. If you offer that employee $185 to utilize for public transportation or carpooling, they can take that money home. We're not having to have them drive to work and less cost. It's a win-win for an employer and an employee. And so we are asking, in this instance, to have our Office of Finance and our Department of Transportation to begin the process of identifying those businesses, to design a program that is going to ensure that people take public transportation. This morning, Mr. Labange and I were out with Congressman Sherman and Wazev Yarslinsky at the Orange Line anniversary, and there was hundreds of people getting on and off that bus, and to celebrate the fact that more than 20,000 people take that bus every day, and more than 6 million people have taken the Orange Line over the last year. We need to do everything we can to encourage that public transportation. And I had an opportunity today to take the subway after that downtown. Enjoyable ride, short time period, it was convenient, it was a known time period, I could make it downtown, and we need to do everything we can to incentivize. could make it downtown, and we need to do everything we can to incentivize. And so we're asking the Office of Finance, as they go forward, and I'm not sure I see anyone from Office of Finance in the crowd here, but to put on our business tax information that we send out, asking an employer how many, if they lease their parking, and how many employees they have. So I would ask today that we adopt our report from our committee, and to move forward on a parking cash-out enforcement program in the City of Los Angeles, and take the lead in trying to reduce congestion in our communities. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel.
And there was no time here, so I just kept going.
That's all right. You still had seconds left, don't worry.
Oh, okay.
Plenty of time. My apologies. Mr. Rosendahl is next. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate that. And I want to thank Ms. Gruel for her leadership on this issue. And folks out there know this, that if you did live in Santa Monica, I worked in Santa Monica, and they had that plan in place, and it was a great incentive. There's too many one-person automobiles out there, we can't continue it. We might have to, at some point, look at some of the other countries around the planet that do odd and even license plates, or demand that two people get in the car. We're not there yet, so there are incentives. And what this does allow us, within thirty days, that an employer that has fifty persons or more, regardless of the number of different work sites, is located in an air basin designated as non-attainable area for air quality standards, subsidizes employee parking on property it does not own, can calculate the out-of-pocket expense of providing the parking subsidy, can reduce the number of leased parking spaces without penalty. So employers with fifty employees or more, this is for you to look at. Look at what Santa Monica did to this. They did a major, major step in the right direction. We need to do the same. I look forward to this report in thirty days filling us in. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. That's our last speaker on the queue. If we can please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That's approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item seventeen, called special by Councilmember Padilla, and there are two reports on the file.
Mr. Padilla.
Is staff here on this item? If I can ask them to come forward and begin with a presentation or a brief summary of what this item is, but as they come up, let me formally move the communication from the Chair of Arts Parks, Health, and Aging, and we'll discuss. Go ahead.
Why don't you come up to the table, please?
Hold my time, please.
Good morning, Mr. President and councilmembers. My name is Paul Sang. I'm with Bureau of Engineering, Architectural Division.
I'm Tom Gibson, with Department of Recreation and Parks, Planning and Development.
In regards to the proposed Hanson Dam skate park project, we have the funding of one point one-two million of Proposition Forty specified funds being allocated to this project. And so far, we have completed some preliminary work for the project, meaning we have narrowed down on the site selection. We looked at, you know, we went out there with the staff and with the Councilmember Padilla's staff to look at three potential sites out there and did some evaluation, and we have this finalized the site with the Work and Park staff and with everybody. And the next step would be to finalize the scope, based on the understanding that there are additional funding available that would be allocated to the project, so we can afford a larger in-ground concrete skate park in lieu of the originally proposed above-ground modular skate parks. So we're very excited to have this additional funding in place. The next step would be to have these funding confirmed with Recreation and Parks, and then proceed with the community process and the design process.
Okay. Thank you for that. And colleagues, what I'm asking the department to do here is switch gears a little bit for the sake of a much better skate park for the northeast San Fernando Valley in lieu of facilities, or basically a skate park on the cheap. This project was initiated when our colleague, Tony Carthanas, was in the assembly. And my staff, working with his staff at the time, secured a little bit over a million dollars for a skate park somewhere in the vicinity of Hanson Dam. What we learned after the fact is, while that would have paid for a skate park, it would have paid for a bare minimum of a skate park, if you will. And so years later, as you've heard me talk about Hanson Dam as a region, the Children's Museum, the libraries, the golf courses, the hiking trails, the swim lakes, the fishing lake, and all the other family-oriented activity, we come back to this project of the skate park, a project that I've gotten a lot of letters from in my district, from kids in the community. So we've identified additional sources of funding, in addition to the original Prop Forty monies. There's an additional one million, additional dollars, that come from a combination of Prop Forty RZH funds, and another two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in Quimby fee funding from the City of Los Angeles. And with this additional monies, as you mentioned, we're intending now to build an in-ground concrete design, as opposed to the modular facility that we had originally talked about. So I wanted to be clear that the council action today is giving the department the direction that they need, having identified hard dollars from specific sources that you can rely on to build a quality skate park for the northeast Valley. So the only other question I have right now is in terms of the timeframe. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the design phase will begin January first, two thousand and seven, which is a few months away, but that construction is anticipated to last from June first, two thousand and eight, through April of two thousand and nine? That seems like a far ways away, in my opinion, for a project like this.
Typically, we have a one-year design process for typical skate park, because a skate park requires a specialized skate park designer to do the design work. And that would be followed by about five months of bid and award, to get a project out to bid and award to a contractor. And then we have a one-year construction for the skate park.
Is there any way to expedite the design process from a year to maybe six months or eight months?
We'll definitely look into that. At this point, I have to, you know, bring the consultant on board, and we can negotiate with a consultant to see if, you know, there's any way we can shorten the timeframe.
It's possible, also, with the community meeting process. It depends on how those go. Sometimes the skateboard projects are a little bit more complicated, and sometimes they take a little longer.
And you know we're ready and able to assist on the community meeting organizing and facilitation and whatnot. So I like the council's approval of my motion today, which was the communication from the Chair of Arts Parks, Health, and Aging Committee report with its underlying instructions. But if I can request a report back on expediting the timeframe, which I'm confident we can do, we've done it on much bigger projects, I think we can do it on this one as well. Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'll second that. If there is nobody else wishing to be heard, let's open the roll. Oh, sorry. Like say anything else? Okay. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. If there's no objection, we'll send that forthwith. Next item, please.
Next item is item twenty, and that was called special for a card from the public.
Okay, we've got a card. Zumadog?
Yes, it's Zumadog, EAA Engineers and Architect Association Week, because once again, I'm bringing attention to how important these fine engineers and architects are for the city, because they affect this project, too. As a matter of fact, items number twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four all have to do with engineers and architects who are going to strike, because they've been working without a contract, and I hope that you can maybe speed that along. And here's how it applies to this item. You need engineers for pro-
Sir? Excuse me one second, Ms. Perry, yes? Does she want?
An item to be taken out of order.
Okay, we'll take that next. Mr. Dog, if we just make sure, you made that connection, but if you can speak to the street lighting itself.
Yes, yes, my time's ticking away, yes. Well, here's how they affect the project. You can't have, you need engineers to plan the improvements for street lighting. Engineers do that. Also, it says here, money will be collected annually that will go into the Lightning and Maintenance Assessment Account. So as soon as you have the word "money" into account, well, the EAA also has accountants. And then if you have money in an account, then you have auditors. The EAA also are accountants and auditors. So from the design of the project, to the engineering, to the collection of the money, to the auditing, this whole thing's going to be shut down, so you better sneak it through quickly, because EAA is about to strike, because they've been working without a contract since two thousand and four, it's set to expire. And I know city council could approve the money, since you're giving money to hotel workers, which is private, you could certainly step into this city matter and help clear this up, and then we could have this project moved through. Thank you.
That closes public comment on this item. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. And Ms. Perry, would you like to take item thirty-eight out of order, if there's no objection?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President. I would like-
We do have two public speaker cards on it.
Great. I would like to recognize if you would have Bishop Carolyn Tyler-Gidry, and I believe Ms. Jackie DuPont-Walker-
Yes.
-come to the podium. And while they are approaching, today is the first anniversary of the homegoing of Rosa Louise Parks, and it is an opportunity for us as a country to take some time to remember her life and the legacy that she left us, by using it as an opportunity to teach, and teach what she taught us. And that is why Bishop is here today with Ms. Walker, and if you could, say a few words for us all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Gruel, Ms. Perry, of course, and members of the city council of this great city of Los Angeles. I am Bishop Carolyn Tyler-Gidry of the African Methodist Episcopal Church. I serve as chairperson as the Commission on Social Action for the Connectional Church. With me, of course, is Ms. Jackie DuPont-Walker, consultant to the commission, and other, and a very active member of the Los Angeles city area. We want to thank you this morning for this time set aside to honor a great American, Mrs. Rosa Louise McCauley Parks. Mrs. Jamesina Evans, who is president of the Women's Missionary Society of the African Methodist Church, wrote recently about Mrs. Parks, and I quote, "Mrs. Rosa Parks sat down in serenity, determination, patience, meekness, and humility. Her power up created a defining moment more than fifty years ago in a single encounter with racism and discrimination, and thus changed her life and the course of human events in these United States," unquote. Mrs. Rosa Parks was the power source for African-Americans and Africans and others around the world. Sister Parks practiced her faith with service in her church, serving as a stewardess when she was arrested fifty years ago, and finally as a deaconess, the highest position for a laywoman in the local church. So by taking God at His word, she stood on His promise, never to forsake her, by sitting down on that fateful day more than fifty years ago. So we thank you today for helping our community to remember the courageous actions of this brave American. We can best honor her memory as we take our opportunities to sit, or stand, or speak up for the least and lost and left out in our city around the world. I think today, Rosa Parks would certainly say, "We can't dump homeless folk, but we can help them."
Thank you very much, Bishop. Jackie DuPont-Walker?
Mr. Garcetti, Ms. Gruel, Ms. Perry, my councilman, Wesson, and members of my city council, I join Bishop Guidry in thanking you for this signal honor. Los Angeles has always been ahead of the curve on everything that's important, and we thank you today for remembering Ms. Parks. Over the year, we have reflected on what she has contributed, and today we join with the NAACP and the Rosa Parks Institute, who wish they could be here, but are in DC planning an evening's event. LA is unique in having the Rosa Parks overpass. LA is unique in that it was the winter home of Rosa Parks, and LA will be unique again when Rosa Parks Villas becomes a reality in the next several months. We thank you for remembering her, and we join with you in honoring her legacy.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you, Bishop. Thank you, Mr. President, Ms. DuPont-Walker. And from six-thirty PM to eight-thirty PM, unfortunately, this is in Washington, DC, but it is a commemorative program, Historic Metropolitan AME Church in Washington, DC. And for those who are interested in finding out more about the life and legacy of Rosa Parks, please visit www.rozaparks.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Can we please open the roll on this item? Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next item is item twenty-five, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Mr. Dowd, we have cards in for you for items twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-two. Would you like to address them together, or would you like me to just go one at a time through them, two minutes each?
One minute.
Okay. Item twenty-five, please. You have two minutes.
Thank you. This is consolidating some election processes to save money. So we're going to give this a unanimous yes vote, and we're going to save the City of Los Angeles two and a half to three and a half million. I just want to point out to the EAA, if they're going to come in tomorrow, there's another possible three million that we just saved.
Sir, if you could please address the consolidation of the elections directly.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we can open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please, if there's no objection. Next is item twenty-six. Mr. Dowd, if you'd like, come forward.
Yeah, I'm taking these separately, because, you know, I want to address each one individually and not have them lost, and, but this is a good one today, isn't it? You know, the Anti-Discrimination Day. Wesson and Parks, The Taste of Soul, sponsored by one-hundred-point-three, The Beat Radio. So what I might do is, I'd love to go, I might go to, well, missed it already, but it would have been lovely to see how many times we heard that word at that show, because I bet it was a couple of hundred at least. It's not about the word, it's about the discrimination, but hey, this is a great item, but I just want you to see where I'm going. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Next item, please.
Next item is item twenty-nine, and that was also called special for cards from the-
Mr. Dowd, you have item number twenty-nine now.
Yeah, this is a good one. The American Diabetes Association behind this, spoken on it before. I won't get into personal details, but I'm all for this one. I give that a unanimous yes.
Thank you. Let's open the roll on this item. Please close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item thirty, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Okay. Item thirty, Mr. Dowd.
Wow. Okay, this is the one I was waiting for. Weiss-Rosendahl, and it's the Spooktacular. So how come we're allowed to use that word? And I'm no racist, because I'm the only one here looking out. I'm a white guy looking out for a black guy who's homeless.
This has nothing to do with the item. I mean, don't-
If you can address the special event that is before us right now, that is what is before us. If you'd like to address the motion, you can do that.
I'd like to quote the Janice Hahn Rule, the tangent.
Sir, if you'd like to address directly the Halloween carnival, please do so.
Okay, well, it's the best time of year, isn't it? Halloween. So brings out the best and the worst in people I know, because it's my time. But I, why can't I address the, you know, the racial aspects of this one?
There is no racial aspect directly in this. Sir, if you'd like to address that, if you have anything else left to say, please do on the Spooktacular, okay? If nothing else, we'd like to close the public comment. If you have any comments about the special event, we'd be happy to take them. This is your sixth minute right now.
Okay, I'll keep going. It's October twenty-two. It's a special event sponsored by the city. It's been and gone, but it was the Spooktacular.
Thank you. Can we open the roll on this? Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, next item, please. Okay, next item, please.
Item 32, called special for cards from the public.
Mr. Dowd, it's your last one.
Okay. It's another one of these. Extending the reward offer for another 60 days. Now, we only have to read in the LA Times today all about the problems that the police are having right now. They're 14 months behind in their DNA database. They're behind in the fingerprints. And now what they're doing is they're trying to arrest anybody they can because they find out if they have a felony conviction, and so then they're authorized to run you on a DNA sample. But obviously, just like the homeless, it's all out of control. All the numbers are backing up. The jail's overcrowded because we're trying to regulate everything instead of Arnold says encouraging people. $50,000 ain't enough.
That closes our public comment. Can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
These motions are posted and referred.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Padilla requests to be excused Tuesday, November 14 to leave at 11:45 for city business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Padilla is excused.
Councilmember Parks requests to be excused Tuesday, November 21 to arrive at 11:00 AM for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Wesson moves. Mr. Zion seconds. If there's no objection, that excuse is granted, too.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Announcements, colleagues. Now is time for announcements. Anybody have any announcements? Mr. Labange?
Just again, Ms. Gruehl spoke of the first anniversary of the Orange Line, which is very successful today.
Okay. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, if I can please ask everybody to rise in council chambers for adjourning motions. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Weisar?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and I just got back from a trip to Japan, and I wanted to mention that we were very well represented by Councilmember Rosenthal, Smith, and Labange, my neighbor, who all talked about what a lasting impression you all left on the city officials in Nogoya, and we have a great sister-city relationship with them. They really value the relationship we have with them. They remember everything that was occurred here in council, and we welcome them. And I wanted to mention that we should continue to develop these relationships as we continue to discuss mutual interests, mutual concerns, and the way, different ways that we're all addressing very similar issues that we face. So thank you, Mr. Smith, and Rosenthal, and Labange for being very good representatives for the city of Los Angeles in Nogoya.
And welcome back, Mr. Weisar. We missed you, and it's good to have you back here, along with Mr. Zion and Mr. Weiss. Colleagues, one other announcement today is United Nations Day, October 24. This is the 61st anniversary of the ratifications of the UN Charter. Our constituent friend, Norma Foster, I believe, from Mr. Labange's district, pointed out that we celebrate United Nations Day each year as a member of the UN and to commemorate the aspirations of the UN, the peace, development, human rights, and protection of the environment. I know Mr. Padilla brought Mr. Kofi Annan in these chambers, and we adopted some of the goals of the Millennium Project of the United Nations, and certainly, this has been a place in which we have continually seen the ties between Los Angeles and the United Nations grow stronger. And throughout the city today, 40 non-governmental organizations and others will continue to celebrate the United Nations, and this year's theme is Mother and Child Health, the Millennium Development Goals 2012. So Happy UN Day, everybody. Any other announcements? If I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for adjourning motions. Colleagues, it is likely that we will cancel this Friday's meeting for funeral for a fallen police officer that I will turn the microphone over to Mr. Labange to detail greater, but we lost a LAPD officer this weekend, Landon Doris, and the cathedral at 9:30 AM on Friday will have the services for our fallen officer. I know that a few, more than a few of us would like to say some words about him, a three-year veteran from the Northeast Division, but Mr. Labange had a recent interaction with Officer Doris, and I'd like to have him speak about it.
Mr. President, members, you know how terrible it is when a tragedy like this strikes anywhere for anybody, but last Saturday, Sunday morning, a accident took place on Riverside Drive underneath the Hyperion Bridge near the off-ramp, and it was a minor accident. And an hour and a half, although later, Northeast Officers Landon Doris and his partner Mark Fujawara came to investigate it. And they're regular patrol officers from Northeast, but they were picking up something from central traffic because an accident took place there. It was a very tough street there because a sewer line construction is going on at the same time. Tragically, a car driven by a motorist did not see the officer at that time. Landon Doris was struck and then flew into the air and struck another car. He was 31 years old. He survived by his two very young children and his fiancee. His mother lives in Nevada and did arrive. Firefighters from Engine 56 and Rescue 56 arrived rapidly and took the officer immediately to where is the greatest of care at County USC Medical Center, and the staff worked very hard, but he expired from the severe trauma of the wounds. He worked for the Police Department of Los Angeles for three and a half years, but as mentioned, he also was a California Highway Patrol officer. He loved traffic as well, and I'm sure that probably went into his thinking to pick up this incident that took place just an hour and a half before his fatal accident on that. As Mr. Garcetti mentioned, the services will be held this Friday morning at our cathedral of our Lady of the Angels. He, at Sunday afternoon, as Mayor Avi Regoso returned to Los Angeles, he did join with Chief Bratton and the command staff at Northeast and many officers at Northeast who were there. He was well-liked, and he worked, his partner, Mark Fujawara, I'm told, was the kind of team that really served the city well. And as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, when there was that heavy vandalism of baseball bats through our neighborhood of Silver Lake in Las Feliz, this is one of the officers who came. And, you know, we talked about that. I didn't even call the LAPD that night. I wanted to seek it out, and it was within two minutes, they were on the streets. Some neighbors had called, and it was him who was the first to respond there with his partner and to try to do something to help the people of Los Angeles. Every day, somewhere in the city, someone's working for the city. Every day, somewhere, day and night, there's officers, whether they're police officers or firefighters, or anyone is working for the city, and the accident took place. So, members, I know you all joined us and stand in salute of Officer Landon Doris and his family and hold in solidarity this tragedy that has struck the city of Los Angeles early Sunday morning.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Officer Doris is survived by his mother, his fiancee, and he has two sons, aged three and one and a half. Before the memorial services, there will be a viewing on Thursday evening and a rosary. That will be at Forest Lawn Hollywood Hills in the Liberty Room from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Again, the funeral will be this Friday, October 27, at 9:30 AM in the cathedral. A sobering reminder of the great sacrifices that the men and women who are the city's finest provide each and every day to all of us and for his entire family. I know air support went to Nevada to fly his mother in here, and that this entire city grieves with that family and for Officer Doris. Any other members on that? Any other adjourning motions? Yes, Mr. Weisar?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd also like to adjourn in the memory of Victor Hugo Bernal. Mr. Bernal was born on October 6, 1953, the eldest son of Jesus and Marina Bernal. Victor was a lifelong resident of Hillside Village in El Surino. He attended Melnoma Elementary, Walter Wilson Junior High, and Wilson High School. He was a talented third baseman and pitcher at El Surino Recreation Center. After high school, he attended Cal Poly Pomona, where he continued to shine in baseball and was later included into the Cal Poly's Hall of Fame. In 1976, he was drafted by the San Diego Padres as a relief pitcher. He always said that the highlight of his career was striking out Ron Say and Steve Garvey back-to-back. Upon retiring from baseball, Victor began to teach science and coach baseball at Mountainview High School. He was a mentor to at-risk youth. He passed away on September 2, 2006, but before he did, he had donated all his organs. Victor survived by his wife of 30 years, Kathy, and his two sons, Andrew and Matthew.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Other adjourning motions? Mr. Labange?
Members, I want to get the correct name, and I know you'll join with Mr. Garcetti. A student going to Hollywood High School, was clipped by a speeder who went through a red light at La Brea Sunset. I will have all the details tomorrow, but every day's a blessing, and it's such a tragedy to have an accident like that. I'll have that information for you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other adjourning motions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you, colleagues, for your prompt attendance today, and we will see you tomorrow here in council chambers. Have a great day. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.